Sorry. Um, so they're converting to also having a regular retail cannabis establishment. And the question to the motion has been separately. Well, somebody want to move it?
I'll move the rest of it.
On it as you know, board.
We need a second for someone to load it on it.
Second.
So.
Christina Bonitakis.
Yes.
Dammakuso.
Yes.
Ludimento.
Yes.
Barbara Boas.
I don't think I can. I voted.
Oh, you voted.
I voted against it, actually.
And Fred Stone.
Yes.
Last up in resolutions is the denial of eighty Shrewsbury Avenue, block thirty nine, lots twenty three and twenty four. That's the subdivision of the senior center that was also distributed. Might give any other comments?
Well, basically, that said that we didn't think that the subdivision was justified, that they never made the positive or the negative criteria for the variance in creating a undersized lot. And that we both, we, the board believed that the matter of protecting the environmentally sensitive lock can be done much easier and better through environmental environmental restraints put into the deed. I don't know what the status is with that because I understand that there was preparation made to give it to the state, and I don't know where it ever went. I don't know if the deed has ever been signed. I have no idea. Christine, do you know anything about it? No?
From, from our standpoint, it's just the subdivision that, that our
Right, okay.
Ground and that, that's all that we need.
All right.
Does anyone want to make a motion on the denial?
Almost.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Fred.
Right, the motion.
Barbara.
Uh, Christina Bonitakis.
Yes.
Dammakuso.
Yes.
Ludimento.
Yes.
And then Fred Stone.
Yes.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I apologize about the AV. This side of the room for some reason does not work. Um, as I sadly joked before, I know it's the twenty first century, and this still doesn't work that well. It's disappointing, and we'll do our best to get somebody to fix that. Um, and I, I ask folks on this side of the day, please speak loudly when you do, so that everyone in the audience can hear you. I'd also like to take an opportunity to welcome everyone here tonight. I'd also like to thank our former members that are no longer on the board of this councilman Ballard, now councilman David Cassidy, vice chairman Art Murphy, Juanita Lewis, and Alex Scherer. We very much appreciate their commitment and time that they devoted to the town. And they will be missed, and I welcome all of our new folks here tonight. I think it's fantastic that so many people want to get involved and spend their time helping out the town. We very much appreciate it. So our first public hearing tonight is one fifty six West Front Street, block twenty one, or block six, lot twenty. Club Naturals LLC, which is in the BR one zone, conditional use, site plan approval in bulk variances, intended to change the use of the property from a single family residence to a conditionally permitted cannabis retailer. The applicant is proposing to expand the existing building on the property by removing a rear deck and constructing single story rear entrance addition, installing a barrier free ramp, standby natural gas generator, uh, refuse and recycling signage and other interior and exterior renovations. Welcome, Mr. Anderson.
Evening, Johnny Anderson on behalf of Club Naturals LLC. My understanding is that the board accepted jurisdiction over the application at its page fifteen, uh, two thousand twenty three hearing, but no testimony was submitted at that time, so we're starting fresh tonight.
Mr. Anderson, if I can be, please excuse me. Ladies and gentlemen, the implication for Red Rocks is being carried, or is it adjourned or carried?
It's carried.
And we're carrying that to a future meeting with no further notice to the public. So if you are here for the Red Rock application, I apologize. I didn't say this fifteen minutes ago. That is not being heard this evening.
Carried to the twenty, August twenty first.
August twenty first. It will be carried to with no further notice. Sorry about that. Please.
Mr. Anderson, the matter was carried after request of the applicant at the last meeting.
That's correct.
So we haven't delayed it in any way.
Oh, no.
Okay, good.
I'm carried at the request of the applicant. Thank you for that. Um, we are starting fresh tonight. We've got a lot of new members, as we heard. And for that reason, I just would want to make sure really quickly that there's no conflicts with the owner of the property, which is Michael Keegan, or the applicant, Club Naturals LLC, and the members of the applicant. We did do a membership disclosure, but they are Garth Case, Rita, Ewing, Jadas Montijo. Anyone have a conflict with any sort of, any of those folks or entities? Um, so as your chair said, this is one fifty six West Front Street, block six, lot twenty. It's in the BR one zone. It is an existing single family home. We're here for the relief that your chair said, which is a major site plan, bulk tea variants, design banners, change of use from the home to a conditionally permitted cannabis retailer, where we meet all of the new standards, board activities, and so on. Though it's technically speaking, a major site plan, um, the trigger for that is the change in the required amount of parking going from residential to commercial. It's just enough space that additional places on the site that were quote unquote major, but we function in my opinion a little bit more akin to a minor site plan because we're kind of adaptive. We're using this existing lot. There's no, uh, driveways, no streets. We're using the same utilities, very little of any grading, anything and this little or no drainage and, and the improvements to the exterior, although nice and smart looking, physical improvements to the lot are, are not tremendous. It's, uh, taking an existing rundown gravel and asphalt lot and creating a new parking lot, but striping, curving things of that nature. So we have, um, we have four variances. Three of those are essentially for existing conditions. One having to do with lot frontage, who are required to have a hundred feet of frontage. The existing lot has fifty feet of frontage, and that's not changing in any way. There's no adjacent underland that we could acquire on the side of us to, to make them. We have a front guard setback. Again, that's an existing condition required at twenty five feet. We have a twenty and change, maybe twenty and twenty and a half feet or so. Again, existing, not proposed to change in any way. I did, uh, we'll show you an aerial photo this evening, but one thing that kind of stood out to me on the front setback at least is as you look up and down that strip of West Front Street, you have a lot of, uh, buildings that are set right at the street line. Brothers, you have a warehouse, a couple doors down right at the street line. A lot of your antique centers right at the street line, West Side Loss, maybe a slight setback. Yes, a really slight setback. But frankly, we're probably more compliant than, than many of our neighbors are. Uh, next variance is for side setback. Right now, we're three point eight six feet from our neighbor. The neighbor is a surface level parking lot. It's not a house. There's no principal building on it, no principal use other than parking. So we're three point eight sixteen, the ten feet is required. We're proposing to take that to zero feet. It sounds bad, right? Zero feet, which is that setback. But what we're really doing is, uh, we're accommodating required ADA ramp. So it's low structure. It's, uh, max, it's going to be as high as our existing front porch. It's open. It's not covered. So it's not like it's a firm wall. It's going right up to the lot one and everything like that. It is also, and we screened, there's a existing solid fence between the two lots, and there's an evergreen buffer on our neighbor's lot on the surface part. The last thing we have is parking deficiency of one space required to have eighty for use, and we have seven proposed. Relatively de minimis as these things go. The board's probably familiar with how dear parking is in the town of Red Bank, particularly as you get close to the core of the town. We do also have the ADA land a bit in public parking garage immediately across the street from the site, as well as, um, allowable on the street parking immediately of the site. So we have four witnesses. Uh, one of them is going to give you testimony in two different fields. We'll try to be as quick as we can whilst your questions and any concerns you may have. Witnesses tonight, we're going to have operations. That'll be first. It's Mr. Garth Case, member of the entity. We have Mr. Simpson. He, my right, will give you some architectural testimony on what we're proposing. He's gonna take a break. He's gonna allow the engineer to come on. That's Mr. Stockton. We also have the graphic engineer who uses the board. We'd be very brief with them. His name's Al Simo. And then we would conclude with Mr. Simpson, just on professional planning, test of brief in nature. Mr. Lexington, perhaps we can elaborate the remarks and exhibits we can.
If you want to do it.
Okay. Most of these have already been submitted with the original application package. Um, and they will not be new to any of you. I'll try to stop when I get to something that's new and a little slower. A one, I do the applicant's intent to proceed. A two is the denial of development permit. A little funky. It was dated October the twelfth of two thousand twenty two. We only received it January thirteenth of two thousand twenty three, and the reason is because we were initially sent to your zoning board because of an issue involving proximity to schools. We appealed that issue, successful in that appeal, and they sent us to you. And that's why we're.
That's because there's no D variance. You comply with all
Correct.
going to the board of the judge. So that's not a question then for the board to worry about, because that's been raised in every single cannabis application. It's not within our control.
And, and for us, it was specifically decided in our favor on the same application. So I'd say it's race Judicata. Eight three would be a narrative development. Eight four, disclosure of ownership. Eight five, owner's consent. A six would be Mr. Simpson's plan. It was called a minor site plan. It was dated, uh, March the sorry.
It is February, February second.
February twentieth, twenty twenty three. I think we're going to mark separately an update for that. We had a green development checklist, A seven. We had Mr. Stockton's plans, Eastern Civil Engineering, a full site plan in March the tenth is A eight. Score and water runoff by Mr. Stockton, which was submitted with the application in the ninth, March thirtieth. We were asked to submit a statement by the applicant under your section four ninety dash fifty six point A. Add as to, um, pre invented operations on site. We'll do that as a ten. Cover letter to your police department submitting a confidential security plan, letter dated March thirty first, two thousand twenty three as A eleven. You were asked to do a certification of compliance, which is for more than standards. We'll do that as a twelve. Mr. Simpson's revised elevation. If they're revised March thirtieth of two thousand twenty three is A fifteen. His revised cover sheet of the same date is A fourteen. Traffic memorandum by Simoff Engineering submitted ten days in advance of the hearing, dated July the sixth of two thousand twenty three.
You tell me about identifying Mr. Simoff in your audience.
I'm sorry.
Could you identify Mr. Simoff? I thought so.
Identify him.
Are you Abraham Simoff?
No.
You're not. Okay, we'll find out at the break. First traffic expert I ever used when I was in my twenties.
A sixteen is something new. Um, and what we've done is we've tried to do a PowerPoint for you. That's going to pretty much include anything and everything you haven't seen. It's forty three slides. I hope you don't have to look at all of them.
I hope so.
They're available should we need them. Uh, it's going to be up on the board to my right, and I produce paper copies, which I'll dispense to all of you right now.
You don't go beyond nine thirty, so you have control of the, of the time. It always can be carried.
One for everyone. The only thing you'll see in your package, or it's not on electronic version, is the last two learning templates that we were asked to drop. Uh, we can separately market it or hand it over if you'd like, or, um, for this application. Eight seventeen, which will be now. That's dated today's date. What seventeen? And the last thing I have is a River Center letter of September, um, from the Visual Improvement Committee dated May the twelfth of two thousand twenty three as A eighteen. All our first witness and having sworn to the case.
Raise your right hand. At the seat so you get yourself comfortable. You swear to, you want to raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
Tell us your name or office or where you reside.
I'm Garth Case. I live in Sussex, New Jersey, twenty three Blackstone Road.
Where?
Sussex, New Jersey.
Sussex, New Jersey. And Jonathan Cowan.
Yes.
Case, would you state your relationship to the applicant?
Absolutely. I'm a member of Club Naturals.
Would you give the court just a brief background?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. Um, I've been in the cannabis industry for roughly about six years. Uh, spend retail and cultivation. Prior to that, I was in technology. Uh, I ran the professional basketball applications network for about twenty years of my life. It's fantastic. Before I entered the campus.
Now, you're seeking to operate a community permitting cannabis retail on the property. Uh, will there be any other business? It's not the same.
No, there'll be no other business.
And what will you sell at the Red Bank Cannabis?
We'll be selling flower, which is cannabis flower, edibles, and concentrates. Uh, all of it comes in prepackaged, um, bundles that essentially have childproof packaging and also older food package.
Are new consumers required to be twenty one age of, uh, one years of age, open?
Absolutely, yes.
Will there be any onsite consumption on the premises?
At the moment, Red Bank does not allow consumption, so there won't be no consumption ourselves.
What are your hours of operation?
Running eight AM to ten PM, which is a prime of the orders.
Is that going, is that going to be seven days a week?
That's to be determined. I don't think it will quite honestly. It doesn't.
You always want to be honest.
I'm going to be honest with you. I don't think it should be. That's the honest truth. Um, but again, we want to stay within the limits of.
You don't, because you do not want any limitations that, though, what you've got, you're, you're, you're pushing right now to ten every day, Sunday included.
Right now, until we need to understand the business itself here in Red Bank and also ensure that we're doing the right thing for the bank itself. So
Okay.
Again, I'll be flexible when it comes to the. Right now.
Mr. Case, uh, how many people will you employ?
Uh, six people, um, at peak, outstanding. Um, there'll be a receptionist, a security guard, uh, two salespeople, um, the pick pack and kind of ship person that's in the basement, and the manager outside at all times.
Yes, we have.
Uh, two shifts. Uh, right now, I think we're looking at eight to three, um, and three to ten.
How, uh, how, when, and where will you receive deliveries?
Deliveries will come to the rear of the building, uh, generally via a small cargo van.
Any particular time of day and chances of receiving those deliveries?
Question. Um, right now, our goal is to definitely have things show up in the morning before the business opens.
You know what type of trucks the employees will come in?
Yeah, they're cargo vans for the most part, very small.
Tell me a little bit about the, um, the type of that we're considering in this whole premise. I didn't suppose of it.
Just to be clear, we're not, you know, getting rid of any cannabis product whatsoever. It's just going to be regular office material for the most part, people's lunches, um, sanitary, you know, stuff. That's really regular garbage that any office would, um, essentially, the law says when it comes to getting rid of any cannabis product, you have to do that differently. So that's exactly what we.
Mr. Weather.
So we have a site at the rear of the building, um, and we'll bring those out, um, on pickup to the street side to make sure that, like I said earlier.
And all, and will you ensure that any cans that are brought to the street are properly removed and stored and being placed?
Absolutely. Make sure to maintain your status of the town and, without question, that's our plan.
What's security precautions?
So we'll have a security guard, like I mentioned before, uh, we should be there during opening hours. Uh, yeah, but twenty four by seven surveillance system, uh, that's remotely monitored also. Uh, alarm system that's remotely monitored. Uh, we shared a lot of this information and more, uh, with the commissioner.
What would you be associated with?
No, because of the packaging that we are utilizing or that the product comes in, um, it's designed to stop odor. However, what we do in addition is ensure that our system has a carbon filter or HVAC system is to make sure that any smells at all that are dealt with.
Do you encourage and promote the use by employees and the public of the available offsite public parking in this?
Yes, absolutely. Um, one of the reasons why we are choosing this site is really because it's probably part of West Street. Uh, and I'm wanting for applicants to go to West Street and only reason to reduce it, validate park. We don't have to pay for the park. Uh, and we also have, uh, you know, other methods that would incentivize people marketing to go and park across the street, to park in public park.
And this is a synergy in your business and some of the existing restaurants or the arts offerings in town whereby somebody might park in one thing and then come visit you on their way, hopefully.
Yeah, I think there's going to be a fair bit of foot traffic, quite honestly, just based on our location, um, and, you know, where we sit. Uh, they see in every places, I think, there is a fair bit of foot traffic and so.
Yeah. Well, um, something that's come up on, on prior applications that I've handled, the, um, queuing, you know, public queuing. How are you going to, uh, ensure that there's no queuing of your patrons on a public site?
That's, that's definitely something that comes up a lot. Uh, from a standpoint, it's interesting, you know, we've been three other applicants that have come through, see you before and even two of all three, uh, and should they become licensed, queuing will definitely not be a problem, right? Because there will be competition with each other. However, uh, one of the things that I focused on heavily here is using technology to manage queue. And so we have some technology that will allow people to serve times to time. We are very cold. Last them to leave, and they'll get a text message to come back. Uh, so our goal is definitely not to, um, have large queues at all, especially these little ones.
Like people to, um, send us orders or film in via the internet to reduce the amount of time and give pickup slots to kind of focus or channel people to off hours?
Absolutely. That's one of the biggest, especially in our industry overall, um, is getting people to buy online. Really does cut down the amount of time that someone comes in to this next street. Uh, once they've gotten all the education they need from online, use the other products. It's just a matter of coming in and.
Like our microphones don't, so I'm going to raise my hand. Um, may I ask a question at this point in time, please? Um, you've spoken of the number of employees you're going to have. spoken of, uh, no queuing, et cetera, et cetera. But you have, I have not heard how many people will be, can fit in and will be allowed in the building at one time other than the employees.
It's a very good question. Um, do you mind if we get it for Mr. Simpson, who's an ex-witness, the architect, to speak to?
It just seemed to go with everything else you were talking about. That's why I asked. Okay.
I'm, I'm certain this witness might be able to address it, but I know for sure Mr. Simpson can. We could swear him now and get that info if you want.
Just didn't want to be forgotten.
Oh, it's, it's good. We'll certainly add it in this. And the last question I had, um, Mr. Case, would, uh, would it move you at all, um, may we fulfill deliveries of allergy?
At this point in time, yes, we do plan on, since our business plan to do so, uh, goal definitely is to consolidate those deliveries though. So that, you know, our driver is doing several variants. Uh, so I don't anticipate the driver coming back or base our site with two or three times, um, a day. But generally, that's what we're looking at is to have, um, the driver have all those deliveries without.
You're not going to have that way, like the proverbial, like, uh, door dasher coming constantly to pick up orders and one arms, not at all. That's the last question I have for this witness, but I'd certainly invite the board to ask with many.
Uh, I am going to Mr. Case, where do you plan to have your employees park?
In the public parking lots, but honestly, is where we, um, discussed having our employees park. I, I think it makes a lot of sense that as much parking as possible on site for our patrons.
And will there be a prohibition?
Sorry, sir.
Will there be a prohibition for your employees to park on?
Absolutely. Yes. No question about that. Band-aids essentially value.
Unless, of course, the board, rather, of course, is a testimony field. Otherwise, we're in need to dedicate some parking on site for employees only.
I will let you know, Mr. Anderson, that in everyone we've had, we have prohibited the employees from parking on site. Is there any reason why this should be different?
Not right now, but if it, if it.
Right now, well, tonight's the night.
I, I have one more jump in here. Um, I also did not hear in your presentation about the money. I'm sorry, this is, this is, this goes, guys.
Gotta yell.
Oh, my teacher voice. Yeah, get my kindergarten teacher voice back on. I lost it a long time ago. Um, is there, um, you did not mention the time of the, um, money pickups um, and how often they would be during the week. So I, um, we have heard that on all the other ones.
Absolutely. So for us, it depends on the date, quite honestly, how much money is coming. Um, you know, the goal here is to have, if it's, if things are going very well, um, we can, you know, maybe two or three times. Um, we have several vaults on site, right? Um, that stores the dash and so, you know, but no more than two or three times.
Then also the board, have any questions for Mr. Case?
Yeah, as, as much as you have to have encouraged customers to use the parking across the street. Crosswalks are down on Allen Place and on the highway. That is already at times most of the time. Um, you know, so to just might not be a, a safe option the way it's laid out right now for pedestrians.
I understand your concern. I think, um, I've been spending some time inside myself. Uh, I've observed people using the crosswalks quite a bit, right? So it's not allowed to have people going back and forth. Basically, what I've seen, now, I think, again, it's possible adults.
You would, but they don't. And I drive, I'm driving through the town for twenty nine years straight, and there's, it's a, it's a problem everything. But here you have it spread out so far. Pretty much looks even from where your building is to the crosswalks, which is a good block and a half. You know, almost a hundred yards.
I think it's a very good question, Mr. Wilson.
I think it is, too.
Now, actually, a kind of a question over the board in general, I'll look to that. Say, there are no crosswalks by knowledge at West Street.
Not yet.
Uh, but West Street is, is pretty close to the site and might be a means of incentivizing people to use the crosswalk rather than jaywalking. Is there any plan in the works or could we collaborate with the borough and city county to make that a reality?
My dog's not in that hunt, but maybe.
You're, you're willing to collaborate with the borough engineer and, and the county only want. It's fine with us.
And it, it might be a possible solution just to address that, see, concern that we would be willing to certainly explore its county's road, their jurisdiction, they would say, but that could be done. Maybe that's helpful for.
You're speaking a little more detail to odor mitigation, what your, what your plans are, uh, because despite packaging, uh, the odor from, uh, cannabis is quite pungent and does penetrate. Uh, I spent a lot of time in the Navy trying to cover up the odor from the sergeant-at-arms. I'm successful.
Okay, man, that's fair. You're, you're a hundred percent right. It is a very pungent smell, um, but keep in mind, there's no. Um but keep in mind, there's no consumption on site, right? And we're smelling generally is from the consumption. Uh and you know, one of the things I should mention that I'm doing too is we're asking our patrons to sign a good neighbor agreement with us. Right? That says that, you know, if you violate the borough's rules, because you have rules in place in the ordinances today about where you can smoke. And and it goes pretty much along with most smoking laws. So, you know, violate those rules, they don't get to shop with us. Right? Um because we want to be very, 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 very good um neighbors, right? With everyone here. Red Bank. So again, our products packaged sealed very tightly. There's no smell.
Sorry, you're gonna have, you're potentially gonna have displays of of, you know, bud or anything like that.
Not at all. So that's that's a great question. No, we're not. Um all of our products are stored in the vault in the basement. Um when you order, um order is brought up um via conveyor, right? And you're given it in a sealed bag. Right? And if you choose to break that bag, uh then, you know, we're saying you shouldn't, right? But that's essentially it. You don't have odor from your product. It does, it's bad and sealed.
Mr. Case, along those lines, as a follow-up to this uh very good question. Um will there be any cultivation or manufacturing in that sort of? So.
Um absolutely not. This is purely retail. There's no cultivation or manufacturing whatsoever. Really just the sale of prepackaged, pre used products, and the law makes itself, by the way.
So is there like a HEPA filtering system?
The question, the HVAC system does have a carbon system that allows air exchange, right? So it does the cleaning the air. Again, this is just going above and beyond to make sure that there is no smell. We're also investing in what's called a centimeter, which allows you to determine the level of smell. Any types of smell that comes from our property, to make sure that there is none.
And uh you refer to that as a centimeter?
It's called a centimeter, yes.
It's a commercially available product? I'd be interested, just as a follow-up, seeing some literature on that, if somebody could give me a link. So what you're saying is that all the bud that you're getting is already coming.
The mic's working now.
You're saying that all your bud that you have is coming in, being delivered in a sealed container and stored and stored in the basement. And so I'm assuming there's gonna be a conveyor, so there's going to be employees that are going to be occupying the basement. There'll be one person in the basement that actually sends the product to the main floor.
Anyone from the board have any questions for Mr. Case? Anyone from the panel have any questions for Mr. Case? Hey, Mr. Anderson, next up.
Right, we'll um we'll have Mr. Simpson's woman then, about about the fitness follow-up question on building. Thank you.
Raise your right hand, just swear to tell the truth, tell the truth, nothing but the truth. Tell us who you are.
Certainly, um just juggling some chairs here and having a sciatic back.
Having a sciatica problem?
All right, you guys can come as a red on that later.
Later. Mike, just tell us the whole story before you guys start after the end. Uh yes.
Tell us who you are, where your office is.
Uh my name is Michael Simpson. I'm a rich start back in state of Jersey.
We are more than happy to accept Mr. Simpson as the expert in architecture and planning, as he has testified before this board more times than I can possibly remember.
Thank you and thank you for being here.
And as I said before, we'll have Mr. Simpson speak solely to architectural for the time being. He'll come back up after we put in the rest. We'll do some planning more. Um Mr. Simpson, I'm gonna go slightly out of order because I don't want to forget the follow-up question. Um she asked what the uh is building going to fire load capacity and so.
I think she's looking for a body count. Um and I think that that's um I'll be as direct as I can be without having a final final plan for the building department. Building under the New uh New Jersey Reform and Trucking Code would probably be able to sustain about eighteen people. But so you have six employees on the shift, that puts you in some place around twelve people as um shoppers. I could let a friction in the building. Uh I won't do the traffic testimony, but you'll hear some testimony later that. Relates to the number of people and changeover within the building at only any given hour basis. So that'll actually be a more firefighting as replaced parking as well. So the bulk amount of customers in the building at the time would likely be in the vicinity of twelve people. Again, plus or minus one, two people.
And and a follow-up on that, um what is the average time each customer stays in the store?
It this relates a little bit back.
Yeah, right.
Um which, your point is to bring that question up really good.
Mr. Case, you can use this microphone. Mr. Case, you can use that mic, please, so we get you on the record.
If you're a new customer, we anticipate it being around ten minutes. Uh if you've been with us before, it'll be between three and five minutes.
Is that assuming that they order only one?
Uh three and five, for sure, online.
Thank you.
Okay, uh kind of taking a step back, then I just do wanna make sure that, first of all, are you familiar with the site as well as the vertical chance to plan?
Sure, very much. Mr. Kate, just to clarify, your case had come to us in twenty twenty-two, looking at multiple properties in Red Bank. Came to us with this specific property, asked us to do a feasibility analysis of the property. For the specific use in that location, revealing the ordinances that were in place, looking at the various different issues. And you're just seeing evidence with our advice that this was actually uniquely suited for a number of different reasons. But those are more planning issues than they are architectural. From an architectural point of view, based upon the. Low impact of what they would need to do to the building, we also thought it was suitable. Um it's readily convertible on the first floor or reasonably uh first floor plan for retail use. It's very proximate to the downtown, making it very easy to walk there, much less drive it. Um it has all the bones of a nice Red Bank. Late nineteenth century, early twentieth century residents, and therefore sort of has that vibe that you can be recreated. Uh in those buildings, uh so we have exhibits, we could show you during your thing, but I'm not sure if we can do that. Uh the existing photographs show you that sort of a quasi Italianate. Uh house, it's not on your historical register in any way, shape or form, but it has some of the same characteristics in some of some of the homes that are. So our intention to try to bring back some of that in the renovation of the house, get some of the. For funkier details off the building to bring some of it back in, make it a little bit nicer house on that.
Again, just kind of a foundational thing, there were a number of exhibits that I referenced. Early on, things that you would prepare, prepared under your supervision, just want to make sure that as to exhibits A six. Thirteen and fourteen, that those were all prepared by you under your supervision.
Uh while I don't remember all those exact numbers, what I will say is that, yes, we prepared all the artificial drawings that are in your packet. Uh sheets A oh one through uh. A two hundred, including the EX drawing, which were the existing conditions of the building that is there now. Uh we reviewed it with a client design, the various additions. Uh work on the aesthetic of the exterior to make it something that was a little more in character with uh Red Bank residences.
I'd like to be able, for for those that may not be a hundred percent with the location of the site, I'd like to just orient them to the location. Utilizing the aerial photo within the slideshow. Page twenty-six for those of you. We're onto board of that site, sir.
True. So you have, our site is immediately adjacent to the atrium's parking lot right here on West Front Street. Um so this is the site directly across from the uh PRC building that includes various different offices. Parking garage, plaza. Uh you've got uh should be the battery warehouse building which here. Uh there's miscellaneous other commercial buildings there still, um still there. I can't remember the uh the pool table guy. Uh you know, yeah, Dan and felt, uh it was that used to be here. You've got uh brothers on the corner. You have uh you know, miscellaneous office and you know, the Red Bank center here. Across the street behind the lodge, you've got power, you've got the atrium, the various multifamily uh projects along here. And being created back here. Additionally, you have the Ocean First Bank building here and the uh, you know, the Whitewings that is. The the Red Bank, uh the Walgreens, yes, excuse me, Walgreens uh uh.
I have a quick question of your truth. Um just looking at the front elevation of the building. Uh so you're showing a storefront. Uh there's curtains drawn. I'm just thinking about this in terms of in the evenings as a sort of uh illuminated storefront. Uh or how this is going to be portrayed, uh it's gonna be lit up. What sort of lighting will the building have?
Um the intention is that the lighting really is gonna be. Um especially at nighttime, if you want to do it so that you cannot see in, because that's actually a requirement that you were. Um so, yes, there are curtains, there may be some actually um filming of the windows as well. Um the sign ordinance is pretty restrictive as far as what we're allowed to say on a mild outside, which is not much. Uh you can name the business in the sign on the street, but you can't really indicate cannabis, you can't indicate a product in the windows. So none of that would be visible. The intention was to create something to help up to a nice house. Not unlike what you would have on Maple Avenue or Broad Street, it's a house that got converted to business use.
And you began describing the existing improvements, but we didn't have in front of the board. The photographs of the existing uh building. You can get a front elevation.
Well, yeah, here we have the existing house as it is on West Front Street. You can see that the orientation is, you have an open driveway with trees on the left. You have a very dead tree on the right and then fence that separates this property from the parking lot to the atrium. Uh that's the view to the gravelly, not terrible, great driveway that goes down to this activity. And a very narrow side setback that you've got on that parking lot side. I've noted that's a very dead tree. Here in the building, you currently have this, again, unmanaged kind of parking lot that has a. Deck, uh a basic little backdoor entryway with a power room. Uh and there is, and on the right-hand side here, hard to see, is there's a little bit of a entryway into the basement. That right now is allowed the vegan to take it useful. So what we're gonna do is make that take that away, that can build within, that allows the basement access to be better for service. Uh when they have sprinter vans that come in and out of here, where they're picking up and deliveries, that'll happen in fact.
And real quick, um we haven't, just for purposes of record, we haven't authenticated any of these photos of the aerial. The aerial photo is out of Google Earth image supplied by you to me.
Yes, that was a Google image we provided. It's a somewhat of a replica of uh the same aerial. Thing that we have as our key map, which just happens to be the uh uh the one that's the aerial view. These are all photographs either taken by me or my staff, so.
Now, Mr. Simpson, let's let's show the board. Your elevations, some of these little vangrins and strap, what's gonna be that exterior of the building itself.
So, yeah, so looking itself, uh. So at the first floor, what is being proposed, as I noted, is there's a an addition at the back corner here. What that addition at the back corner does is it allows that better access to the basement where the vaults and product storage will be. And then it also allows them to create a larger uh operating staff space on. So the staff will basically be in this location, serving the customers, will enter the building from the front. So you'll basically park at the back, come around the building by the barrier-free access. Come into the building through a front door. This is where the security checkpoint would be, and the staff of the client end will be. The staff, there's a little bit of waiting room space over here on the left. And then there at the actual customer pickup area, which will be on this side, and the counter for the staff at this location. So there is ample space within these areas for customers to congregate. But again, it's gonna be limited by the building code to no more than probably twelve or fourteen, depending upon the final design. That existing bathroom will serve as the barrier to accessible laboratory on the first floor. And then the door out goes back out. And the reason for that is you actually want a single circulation path. From a security point of view, as well as a customer delivery point of view. You don't want people sort of milling, going in and out various different ways. You want to have a very controlled pathway in and out of the building. While we do on our site plan, show that there is a front walkway up to the building, there is a debate as to whether to have it be something that customers can actually access. Or whether it's actually gonna be used more for uh circumstantially, the deliveries or or pickups. From the uh, there's, you'll see on the site plan, there's an actual little pull-off space right here. So it's really that doorway and walkway that's really for this, not so much for that. The intention is to have the customer navigate the building, come in here and go back down.
Mike, what is the ceiling height basement?
Uh it's actually quite high, it's over eighty.
And we could quickly show you the basement, second, third, and I think one of the important take-ons, which is we can confirm that that's not kind of public space.
Right, that's correct. So as we noted, there's a ramp that'll go from this addition, oops. There we go. So there's a ramp that goes from this access off of the driveway down to the basement. There's vault storage space here, there is the pick and pack space that Mr. Case referred to here, directly under that employee space. So there's a discussion whether it's a conveyor or don't, basically how that'll get up and down between those spaces. But this is a secure basement accessed only by staff. Uh they can get through from this way, and then there is an internal staircase that happens in the location, the existing staircase in that house. But that goes under the staircase that goes up to the upper floors. So that staircase is only accessible to staff down in and out of the basement.
Where are the mechanicals from the basement going?
Uh there is an existing mechanical space here. There's a little bit of discussion as to whether to take some of the crawl space, which currently exists on the porch. In this here, in this uh section, uh we still haven't finalized all the design of all the mechanicals. But uh the idea is to try to make use of these kinds of accessory spaces for those. The crawl spaces could be done, we could use horizontally mounted units in there to feed up to the building. And at the upper stories, when you talk about mechanicals, whoops. We get to the upper stories. Um you actually have spaces on the upper stories where our, uh if you notice in the photographs. Building has where it's called mansard roofs, it's a very steep uh exterior thing. Those things are small access. Essentially, where we plan to have other horizontal units feed down to handle the second floor and the third floor space. For those accessory areas around the edge of where the cavity. There is some mechanical space in the sense of there are condensers for the HVAC units. That would be on the rooftop of that one story addition at the back.
Screen any um any exterior units to the best of your ability for that.
Yeah, there was some discussion about whether to remove these remnants all the way up to the rooftop, and we can do that. But it just seems like that from a maintenance point of view, a little bit more of a headache. It's pretty discreet and we can show you in the renders as well as the uh. The uh elevation. So this is what we're talking about, is that we're saying that this little one-story section might have two. Uh mechanical unit, air conditioner, condenser on the roof or a platform. Uh essentially, it will be mounted on that. Uh we tend to move them up to the top roof, we just think that that's gonna be more visible from street, we'd rather not do. If you put them on the top roof, then we're gonna have to screen that, which the code required. Uh we're gonna have to provide access to that in a different way. We just thought from a building mechanics as well as a visibility point. Uh, that this is a better screening, uh, you know, you won't, you literally won't see it from the street, you would only see it from the parking lot. Our generator is proposed here, you'll see that on the site plan as well, the intention is to have landscaping around that. But if there was additional screening needed or desired, we can do that location, uh, on that little one story.
With that, just for clarity, there was an alternate location for the generator, uh, near the refuse area, was that, I think, his point undecided?
Well, uh, let's put it this way, we can have the engineer cut the vibe, well, he and I have a slightly different take on this, but. It's our belief that the best place for the generator is close to the building, it's further from the neighbors. It's able to be imposed and kept relatively silent away from the neighboring properties. Um, in addition, it also cuts down the cost of the electric and the, uh, gas piping that would be necessary to run a generator. If we put it out by the refuse location, there's several things that happen, it gets closer to neighbors, number one, which we don't think is positive. And two, it's going to definitely increase the cost of, uh, lighting generator, because the actual cable and gas line, you know, would run to the extreme, so.
Plus the impact protection.
Right, yeah, yeah, so we just feel like it's.
I ask about the generators and the, and the mechanicals. Um, what kind of an, of a, of a noise factor is it for the neighbor next door? But I see there's a residence right next door.
Yes.
What are we talking about with noise and light?
Well, the size of the, the size of the building is so small, the generator is a residential generator. So if you've driven around neighborhoods that have private residential generators, like my home has a, um, twenty KVA generator. Well, my house is about one and a half times the size of this place. And has the demand, it's probably smaller. Uh, submitted, I think this document has been provided.
Mr. Clar, this hasn't been provided, but my engineers just handed Mr. Simpson's inspection in for a generac, generator, so he suspects that.
Well, I, I don't even have one, that's virtually the one at my house.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I, I know, I know, know that, but I, I see that the, the, the properties are, you know, not that far apart.
Right.
And, um, I'm wondering about the, the, besides the noise, uh, I mean, lights and light.
Absolutely not.
No lighting at all in the back af- after hours, no?
No, no, as far as, that's a different discussion, lighting of the site, I think Mr. Stock. But for the generator, the only light on the generator would probably be, uh, what's on your microphone right now. Uh, since it's out that. Because there are the device that's a wireless thing that could send that information about the generator.
Okay.
That little thing tells you about the operation, maybe red, green, blue, but it's not, uh, something that creates a light distraction. Again, it's a put in acoustically, uh, protected device. Um, it would probably, this says in sixteen to twenty-two, it's probably less than its sixteen, uh, KVA generator. Which in terms of most residential, uh, generators, is very quiet, runs once a week. At a.
Yeah.
Chosen line.
Right.
Uh, as a, uh, way of making sure that it's running. And then, of course, everybody has power outage, it's running.
And everybody's your best friend. Um, I, I'm asking these questions because this is the first time we've had an application where there's actually been residential neighbors right next door. Um, I'm having a problem with that personally, but, and I will inform you that, so my questions are, are a bit.
Rapid.
And, um, I, I believe that, um, some of these questions are really important because it is a residential street. It is in, where there are two other resident, two other homes right next door, or just the one now.
One home. And you have residential properties that are actually more.
Yeah.
Almost all of those are all multi-family, which is not, not really, I understand them.
But they're still residential, and there's still people living there, and we have to take all of that into consideration.
Absolutely.
Um, and the fact that we're actually turning a house into a business is also.
But turning a house, again, I can speak to the planning issue, turning a house into a business in this zone.
Yes, I, I understand.
The thing that's, you know, accepted as part of the plan at, at this end of zoning.
I understand.
Doing that.
Doesn't mean I have to, I get, I understand, but, um, it is, uh. This is still a residential neighborhood, and I, I want to take those neighbors into consideration, thank you.
Someone is living there now?
In the house now?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Gigan lives there now. He travels a lot, but doesn't.
And but he. He, he's selling his house?
He is selling the, yes. Yes. Neighbor, I'm not sure if the neighbor's here this evening, I know there's been some conversation with the neighbor, but I can't speak to them. Don't know what the conversation.
And certainly I think it's a valid question, and your ordinance has performance standards that's required to abide for things like. The noise of the generator, we certainly stipulate that we have to. That's, that's your ordinance, and I think that's, uh. Very easy condition, if the board were so inclined. Since I realize we, we didn't really authenticate the renderings, uh, I believe there's six or so in the package, maybe quite. Though more, were those all prepared by you actually again with the.
Well, I think your terminology is correct, we're not actually prepared by my rendering staff, they were paired by staff of Mr. Um. Case, but basically it was on the basis of the design drawings we had for the elevations. So we went back and forth and did all those renderings as they would properly reflect what we really. Have to be a renderer that they like to work with.
Um, what's the exterior siding material?
Uh, we're looking to probably be like a, a hardy shingle or shaped plank siding. So the idea is that you would get something, uh, hardy, by the way, I apologize, jargon. Uh, it's a, uh, uh, cementitious, uh, fire rated siding instead of using cedar. Which has obviously a sense of chance of burning, uh, you get a much better insurance rating by doing something that's hardy. Uh, the hardy product can be found online pretty rarely, uh, and pretty routinely, looks very much like actual cedar siding. So the idea is replicate that, but in a product kind of paint finish, that, uh, is actually a much better wearing product. Um, not really asked as a question, but I will answer it sort of a reference, there's a discussion about the quote storefront. The idea is that it's not storefront storefront, the idea is that we're going with windows, they get a little bit of a bigger opening feel to them. But there actually is, the intention is to do something that's, uh, much more of a, in the context of the residential construction.
You made some proverbs earlier in my opening statement about the absence of any change to the front setback, uh, and the absence of any change to the lot frontage. Would you just confirm for the board that those are accurate?
Uh, yeah, that's correct, there is absolutely no reason to change anything in that front yard setback. Um, in any way, shape, or form, we would put that out. Uh, so we've conformed the house to the footprint that's there now, other than what happened to the rear.
As far as the wall signs are concerned, we'll, we'll let the engineer speak to the ground sign in front of the yard, but as far as the wall signs are concerned. Do they comply in terms of size, location, number, and method of illumination?
Yes, uh, yes, I think I noted, um, I forgot what you, one of the elevation sheets, probably A two hundred. Uh, we noted what the sign types are, and we conform to the sign requirements of your science standards for those locations.
And will those signs be externally illuminated rather than internally illuminated?
Yes.
You mentioned the ADA ramp and ADA bathroom, will the building be, uh, ADA compliant?
Uh, yes, it has to be, there's no way around that from a cordial venue, uh, in any case.
So, um, whatever you may have with you that will illustrate, um, the location and the extent of the area.
Sure, this photograph, or this sort of rendering is actually sort of showing a little bit of anything. Uh, but there, I'll get the other one, so you see on this side, we get rid of that big tree. Um, this is where we're talking about that barrier three ramp and that little speed slot between the original building and the fence and the landscaping of the parking lot. Um, I believe we have a render that's a real head on, and I wish I could load this up for you in a different way than I can right now. It's almost. As it appears in the street, uh, on that side. There is a discussion, they're not, mine not, let's permanently decide it this morning. That we might want to have a warning on the east side that might protect the side either in weather or other conditions. Uh, it, it's not something that would be permanent, it would be an adjustable warning. So again, if there were, uh, customers, um, you know, keeping the, uh, ramp clean, snow free and things like that. There's a discussion about having some kind of a warning on that side, but that has not been fine from the issue.
Anderson, I could interject before I lose my train of thought. Uh, Mr. Thompson on the.
On that.
Yeah, I know it, it seemed as though there was a little bit of, uh, discrepancy between the.
I never swore you. I never swore you win.
You swore at me a lot, but.
For the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay, okay.
Anyways, um, so could you just describe is the idea, the parking in the rear, uh, someone would walk along. So there would be a hard escape, because I think your ramp showed only going about halfway down, some of the renderings outside that there's.
Would be hard scape clearly.
R escaping in between there, but the intent here would be a continuous hard scape path, uh, from the ADA.
Yes.
Parking space, for instance, uh, along, uh, in a prudent accessible route to the front door. Uh, the one question, I know you mentioned earlier about once someone is inside the building, that they would be going out the back door. I think you would suggest that perhaps in the limited case where a mobility challenged individual would be in the building. They would have to go back out the front.
Yes, that's exactly, we, you know, from a mobility challenge point. While the, I mean, I can't speak to cannabis industry professional, but I know that, uh, again, working from. But there is a fair amount of occupants that might be less able, that would want to be able to use it, but the recognition is that. Um, those will be a lower portion of the population, and that the ramp can still, uh, manage that. It wouldn't be as much of an internal machination, uh, to have the one or two customers that have to back out. To be able to do that.
And your, your testimony in conjunction with the engineer and the survey then will be that you have enough space to literally get that, uh, that ramp in there. It looks pretty tight on this, on the survey engineering plan.
It's like forty eight, I mean, they have just about forty four inches at the narrowest point. Um, as you basically would bounce a railing, you need a three foot clear path. Uh, and then the railings we built for the outside of that. So, yeah, we have the room to do it, but it does mean that the ramp is technically right at the property line. Now, I know, Mr. Anderson and I talked about this, there's an actual section of code that addresses the issue of, uh, ramps and things like that. Uh, for ADA, as long as they are not, uh, above the first floor level. They are considered not to be, both, uh, an encroachment to the yard, it's no different than. So we're trying to make sure that that's true, the incremental distance from where we are. And the ramp starts up to the actual porch level is under twenty inches, which means we get a ramp that's roughly twenty feet long. The ramp twenty feet long means that we also, at the end of that ramp, have to have a five foot by five foot, um. Turning radius at the end of the, up at the porch line. If we were to do that exactly as the code requires, we would definitely comply with that section of the ordinance, which is under a hundred square feet. It's not, you know, it doesn't count as part of the setback concern. The question was for us is that we decided to design it that it's the same depth as the porch, which pushes it a little bit over that hundred square feet. So again, if you, if it was the will of the board as part of the approvals process, we could adjust the size of that to be compliant, to be under that hundred square feet. But we thought that it would look better, honestly, to have it be part of the front porch, rather than be this little odd stuff on the end of it. So, all possible.
Hold on, okay, Simpson, was there an intentional, um, design to put that ramp kind of perpendicular to the roadway, keep it out of the front yard? Obviously you can't put it in the driveway.
No, it's actually in early designs, we actually did look at the ramp on our locations, and there were reasons why we chose not to. First and foremost, we didn't want to put the ramp in the front yard, we felt that putting the ramp in the front yard really would. Uh, accentuate the idea that this is not a residence anymore, or would tend to look like a residence that you were obviously marginalizing. Uh, we are sensitive, um, as about that very issue. So we understand that, and, and so we didn't want it in the front yard as much as we could not have it there. We did initially look at trying to make it into the backyard, but of course, into the backyard means that we now have to approach a parking lot, reducing our parking. So we thought that that was a less positive. We also didn't want to put it right next to the driveway. So, all those three sides considered, we really felt that the side with the parking garage, well buffered, somewhat discreetly lined up along that side of the building is the best place to put the ramp.
Over most of the other topics that I have for you, just checking my list here. Um, oh, and another thing that I said in my opening statement, is to reuse the existing utility services, who just can, uh.
Can you clarify your question?
Will we be reusing the thing, electric, gas, uh, water, sewer?
Uh, as much as practical, again, even though it's going to become a commercial building, probably the most complicated thing is the generator. And again, a residential generator on a two thousand square foot house is not a attractive gigantic generator. Um, so the intention is to use as much as you can of the existing utility service. Probably will need a little bit of an upgrade of the electric service, but there's no reason to change the plumbing. Uh, we will have to suppress the buildings a lot, a little bit of discussion about, uh, fire suppression, things like that. But other than water connection and, uh, that, we probably can't get away with a domestic water supply, you'll have to probably upgrade the water supply. But otherwise, uh, the water demands are going to be low, um, it's not a big utility issue.
To the extent you have to, just upsizing some of the existing services, yeah, hopefully in the same locations, right?
Can we just go back for a quick second to what Barbara had asked about the employee parking? Um, how, how is, so what you were saying, Barbara, is that you prefer to see the employee parking be off-site?
Yeah, employee parking will be off-site.
It will be off-site.
That's correct.
Of your plan already?
Yes.
Because otherwise, the only thing I can see is, how else would you use the driveway? If people were coming in, there was, it's only six cars back there, right? So is part of your marketing going to be to steer everybody away from that parking lot?
To some degree, uh, the thing to think about is that, uh, again, and part of the reason why we suggested this building. Um, given what the description of your ordinance of it has of today. Um, this is probably one of the most convenient to down now, we expect there actually to be a fair amount of pedestrian traffic. So to your point earlier, so we're also going to have the old crosswalk session, things like that, we think is.
Concerned about that.
Yeah, no, I think that's an important question, and we would like to address it with the county and municipality to deal with that. But we think that that pedestrian orientation is going to take the pressure a lot from. Um, so that while we have parking readily available, you're willing to provide, uh, uh, you know, comping of, of all the parking. Uh, we recognize it's a pretty good place for that as well for veterans.
The, the, the problem that I could see with that is you actually have to pull into the parking lot to find out that you don't have a spot. And then you're K turning around to come back out onto Front Street, which is already mayhem most of the time. So you could, you could have somebody trying to get in and out of that parking lot two or three times, you know, rolling around the neighborhood there trying to get a park.
Hopefully it wouldn't be two, three times, if you're first time they get the picture and go, oh, a problem.
Waiting for somebody.
Yeah, uh, no, no, I understand that that's complicated, but that's actually not my thing, that's why.
Okay.
Uh, so we have an engineer and a contractor, so, so I think those guys could speak to that better line.
Anyone else on the board have any questions for Mr. Simpson? Anyone from the public have any questions for Mr. Simpson? What do you, you'll be with us, so he's more, he'll come back as a planner, but we'll call, uh, Mr. Stockton.
They're going, but no, I think.
So we're going to take a perfect, a ten minute break, which really means ten minutes.
Rick Pitstarell. Collins Welsh. Christina Bonatakis.
Present.
Damian Cuso.
Here.
Lou Bento.
Here.
Barbara Bowles.
Here.
Uh, Wilson Bebe.
Here.
Itzel. Hernandez.
Here.
And Brett Stone.
Here.
Brian Farnigan.
Here.
Okay, Mr. Anderson, sorry, but thank you.
Okay, Mr. Anderson, sorry, but thank you. You had a, Mr. Stockton, you want to?
Stockton, you swear to tell the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
And I won't even try to guess how many times you've testified before us.
A- as with Mr. Simpson, we're happy to accept Mr. Stockton as asked for his field of experience, he has testified for this board many times. And Lance Survey. And Lance Survey. All right, Mr. Stock, we, um, pre marked, uh, your plans, they're already in evidence with a prepared body under your direct supervision.
Yes.
Now, um, included within the hour of the meeting is a exhibit that don't look like we've seen. Uh, can you describe that exhibit for us?
Yes, that is a.
If I just speak into the mic.
Mr. Anderson, if you can bring this mic over for yourself. It shouldn't be long enough.
So on on our screen is a colored rendering of the property with an aerial photograph as the background. Something, uh, property, the, uh, went to go on West Front Street as well as my general notes and information, same as what is on the site.
So to the extent we mark that one separate, I think we're up to A nineteen, which describes as your colorized rendering site plan, is that right?
Yes.
dated May the first twenty twenty two?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Would you, um, describe for the board what's being proposed in terms of the site improvements?
Okay, for for, uh, the record in my discussion, the subject property is lot twenty and lot six. The postal address is one fifty cent, West Front Street. Uh, it's an existing lot in a neighborhood that is fifty feet wide by a hundred and thirty eight feet. Whole lot area of six thousand nine hundred square feet. There's an existing two and a half story, uh, dwelling on the property. And there is, there are two existing sheds in the back uh, right corner. And there is an existing driveway along the left side of the of the dwelling uh, that leads to an existing fresh stone parking area in the rear yard of the site. Uh, that front street has concrete curb on both sides and concrete sidewalks. There and that front street has, uh, the existing alley gate extension and we miss. On table TV and that's the payoff. Uh, adjacent to the property on the east or the right hand side of the site is an existing base parking area. Uh, on the north or to the top of the, uh, the rendering, there's also an existing, uh, parking lot that serves, uh, the properties at lot eight point O two and eight on the three off to the north. And then off to the left or the west side of the property is, uh, an existing dwelling that is existing driveway off to, uh, the left side. Well, across the street is the existing municipal parking garage and the other existing building that was the path of the.
Any parking spaces have you designed as part of your site?
The, the, uh, the layout of what was proposing is to be, uh, remove the existing fresh stone, uh, driveway and parking area, put a new paved driveway and and parking area in new parking area behind our dwelling, behind our building will have a total of seven parking spaces, uh, for, uh, facing towards the east. Uh, one of those will be a handicap parking space and there's three facing towards the north or the back of the property. Those will be regular parking stalls at nine by eight. The existing driveway stem that connects our parking lot to, uh, West Front, I'm sorry, the proposed driveway stem connects the front to, uh, from, uh, to, uh, West Front Street curving line is meant to be, um, eighteen fourteen feet wide with an eighteen foot wide segment in the front yard area. And that eighteen foot wide segment is meant to accommodate, uh, the event or occurrence where, uh, part turning in from West Front Street uh, might need to, uh, park a wave temporarily, uh, as a far accident.
Okay. Um, can you, um, that that did come up in the permanent review letter, uh, the dimensions of the driveway, layout of the driveway? Can you discuss, uh, with the board some of the existing site constraints that dictated that, uh, type of arrangement?
The existing setbacks for the house, there's a, uh, requirement in the zone to provide twenty five minimum front yard, but we have twenty point six feet existing on the left hand side, uh, to requirement for a ten foot side yard and we actually have eighteen feet in total measured from the sidewalk line to the, uh, existing, uh, back left corner of the building. And then on the right hand side with the requirement for a ten foot side yard setback, we have three point eight feet existing at the front, uh, right. In that ten, in that, I'm sorry, eighteen foot, uh, segment on the on the, uh, left hand side or the west side of the home where the existing driveway stem is, the existing driveway is only about ten or eleven feet wide. And, uh, we are trying to improve that uh, as much as possible, as much as, uh, practical for the project. Uh, we're proposing it to be forty five in that segment there.
And the, and the practical considerations that don't allow you to widen it any further?
Are because of the size of the lot, uh, with its, uh, fifty foot lot width and the location and size of the existing building that's meant to remain exactly here.
You can't get a twenty four foot two way drive aisle and you only have the, the, the from the building to the side.
Uh, that's exactly right. But as we, uh, get past the building and into the rear parking area, we do open the drive aisle up to with about twenty seventy one together. And then each of the, uh, regular parking spaces are meant to be nineteen by eighteen feet, kind of handicap parking spaces. Have to be eight feet wide. I have a drive aisle next to me.
I'm familiar with this type of, uh, range and driveway arrangement because my place of employment in town, uh, has that type. Did you take a look at the, uh, water area and red bank, Broad Street and Black Avenue, is this, um, type of arrangement seen in other locations?
I think, I think we actually found, I know your office, the office, uh, building next door has a very similar, uh, parking uh, and driveway, uh, arrangement. And I think we found the total of about, uh, eight or nine different, um, buildings existing in the, in the vicinity or in the area of the town that has a very range.
Mr. Simpson can speak in a little bit more detail, but if the board were curious, uh, you're going to see them at slides thirty three. Do you want to use slide?
And it seems we're quite mild at those places, so.
Um, the T and M review letter, Mr. Herman's letter had a few comments, uh, things like the striping in the rear parking lot. Can you address those comments, please?
Sure. For simplicity in the plan view, I just showed, uh, single line work. Henry reminded us in in his review comment that it actually should be shown as air paint striping and I'll update the detail sort of.
Sorry, will the, uh, will the applicant comply with prevailing coverages and open space requirements of them?
Yes, and actually, uh, question is, uh, the, like, I'm drawing the show on it, it does show, uh, my tally of existing and proposed lot coverages and how that fits into the long data chart. Some differently defined. Um, in the existing condition, if this building footprint provides fifteen point six percent cover and proposed conditions with our, uh, renovations in addition to your backlash for the building, that will increase to seventeen point three percent. The ordinance actually allows up to, uh, uh, fifty percent of that coverage. Altogether, our previous coverage, existing condition, seventy three percent. That, yeah, seventy seven point six percent, we've all said done and the proposed improvements are uh, finally constructed. And, uh, your this, uh, does not have a maximum requirement for the previous companies there. There is a requirement for unoccupied open space of fifteen percent in the zone. Uh, when all is said and done, we'll have twenty two point four percent, uh.
So more than.
So it's more than.
Would you review your landscape?
Sure. This is the block of the common area and also shows, uh, some of the, uh, layout, we not have all the text labels of the different, uh, tags. But, um, there are a number of existing tree. On the left side of the driveway stem, there is a large existing oak tree. Uh, right on our side of the property line, that will need to be removed to, uh, uh, accommodate our proposed improvements. There's another smaller, uh, existing tree species of a tree near the back, uh, parking spaces, that'll need to be, there are a couple other existing, uh, trees. Uh, one or two crowding the, uh, side dot line adjacent to or too close to the existing house that need to be removed. And one or two in the back by the shed that need to be moved. There are some other larger existing trees. Uh, just lost the site in the area between our proposed parking lot and the existing parking lot on the adjacent property. Those of course will all remain as what, uh, as part of this plan. Um, along the left side lot line or the western side lot line for the tracks, uh, about half of the way along the, uh, from the back property line going out towards West Front Street. There's an existing masonry block retaining wall with a fence on top of it. From about the existing large oak tree forward, uh, there are right now, it's just kind of some scrubby vegetation. There used to be, uh, an existing fifty hedge row right along the property line for the like the first twenty or twenty five feet in from the, uh, the back of the sidewalk. That was recently removed. But, uh, we'll show that to be replaced with, uh, our proposed landscape. Post landscape shows new fencing to be installed with parameters to frame the property. That new fencing will be a six foot high solid final fencing. Um, and then it shows, uh, an area where we can put a hedge row. And I know in the review comments about the different type of hedge, we might have to just go sat around with a new hedge row uh, in the, in the narrower area that we have between the, uh, new curving line of our driveway and a flat line. Uh, and one or two, uh, trees along the side lot line, uh, in the area where we come with our after we're trapped storage area, they do show some screening around that with some evergreen, uh, trees and, uh, deciduous tree that we're able to plant there. And then along in front of the building in the front yard area, they do show us some additional, uh, trees.
Okay, in the, um, shade tree review and in the T and M review letter, there were some comments about specific species, um, the need, uh, shady tree in the front door, the need to have three trees site wide. We talked earlier today and some discussion about change to the species along the left hand lot line be more like an Emerald Arrows. With the exception of the Emerald Arrows, does the applicant, if he wants to comply with those requests regarding shade trees and landscape substitutions?
Generally, yes, I think for the requirement pertaining to the number of tree trees, we do have to provide one and that was outlined in the permit review as well as in the prior mission, the shade tree reviews. And there's room right at the front uh, right corner at the sidewalk location that is certainly with accommodated that. Um, there are, there's a requirement for us to provide three additional trees in the yard area around the property. Um, if we can't do that without, I said, we should make a contribution and loop. But I would try first to, uh, to accommodate that on the back property line and supplement what's there ready.
And as far as the Emerald Arrows are concerned, um, what would be the impediment there?
That's basically their size at at mature growth and whether that's actually appropriate for the current house site, uh, area that we have. And some sort of hedge, but it would certainly be put, put there.
All right, there's.
As much as I can, it's that correct basis.
Ms. Bowes had a question earlier that I want to return to and ask them to lighting plan. If, um, we can, uh, pull that show it up, anything like.
The lighting, and it is also the landscaping and lighting and she working and set back there. That's been doesn't quite share in. What I proposed on the plan. But a fallout that interested them in the back by the, uh, the L shaped area of, of the, uh, parking spaces or the walkway, uh, that stories there. Um, like show a whole map fixture there and I showed, uh, two, uh, power. And we might rearrange those, that little styles based on where, um, Mr. Simpson brought us. And a request to make over that, we show some lighting along our barriers for access, um, walkway and ramp area as well as some, uh, additional lighting along the new sidewalk.
So let's take that, uh, bit by bit, the, um, the sidewalk lighting and the ADA lighting, was that a, a request or a comment in the T and M review letter that they'd like to see that incorporated?
Yes.
Okay, and you're willing. Now, there was a comment as far as like spillage on adjacent properties and I think this gets to the part of Ms. Bowes concerned about being good neighbors. Are we able to reduce the, uh, reduce or eliminate the light spillage on the adjacent property?
Yes, we'll have to provide some sort of, uh, screening or, you know, to give that light fixture to accommodate that. Basically, why I picked that location was that the light pattern for the style of the fixture that I picked drew the light just off to towards the east, the right hand side in the, uh, adjacent part of that area. And actually removed a little bit of the light off the door adjacent to that existing part in that area. But really not spilling, uh, more than the ordinance allows onto the adjacent residential property.
There's additional.
But I can fine tune that.
Additional things to be done to ameliorate that, that concern.
tie in the rubber real quick.
Yes.
LED lighting, is that what you're looking at?
That's what I, that's what I have specified.
So the spillage doesn't really affect us much on LED lighting as it does at the source. And we've gone through this before with other, um, applications. And then sometimes we inherit LED lighting where there was never pole lighting ever again. The problem is at the source. So I would rethink that somehow because all those, even though there's multiple dwellings and one single family, those ones on the north of you, very good possibility that if that's sticking up there, you're going to see that more that you're going to worry about. We get many complaints about spillage as much as we do about point source, there's point source for LED, which is like looking at the moon.
And I, and I, and I realize what you're saying there, I come across this work where to me it might twinkle and look beautiful, but to you it might be a nuisance and it's a, it's a matter of preference and we can certainly.
How will we resolve that?
Yeah, how will?
How are we going to resolve that?
If, if the board directs that, us not to.
Assuming that the board is going to direct that. So, uh, I assume that new plans would be submitted to the engineer.
Board was minimal and granted approval as a matter of fact, we keep compliance.
It would be a condition.
We're certainly amenable to placing more lighting on timer at a reasonable time, other than maybe. We're certainly amenable to placing more lighting on timer at a reasonable time, other than maybe minimal security lighting as.
Time would maybe go off other than security. Closing up the. How later, how much later can you go before it's daytime again?
Maybe a half hour after.
And thirty? I want time for it to be on, okay.
Um, to the extent the the police department state be some minimal security lighting.
We understand.
Just one more question. Mike, did you say this was going to be suppressed?
I'm pretty sure it's going to have to be.
So what are you going to do with the FDC, the front of the, obviously?
Yeah, I think it would be the front left corner is where I'd be leaning towards, so directly accessible from driveway.
So we have to watch out where we're putting our devices.
Yeah, but it would be the front left corner of the of the building that is really. I guess we call the south west corner.
I think if that the location. Show only two very small shrubs, I can rearrange that.
I only have one or two more questions, we will open it up to the board or anything else they may have, they're professionals. Grading changes, any significant grading changes on site?
Actually, no, the existing site grading is relevant. I did notice in the course of my survey fieldwork. That in the back area of the small parking lot. Low spot. It seemed like it was a. Much more than a bird bath. But that low spot area will be graded out, the whole part. Rated out, so it drains out towards the our gutter line of West Front Street and then right adjacent to. Right adjacent to our existing driveway or to existing store maintenance catch bases right there. So as as water drains out from our site to the gutter line, it goes immediately right into the existing.
I'm glad you mentioned the catch bases, what we're talking about in driveway design, that's taken into account because those catch bases.
I did, and that's why it is the shape that it is, that's why the overall dimension is eight feet wide there. And that's why we do that wave request where separation business from the. Concrete apron to the left side hot line. As well as the width, the overall width of the requirement for the concrete apron to make sure that we don't. Touch or disturb too much those catchings and gas things over the catch base.
The last thing I had was from the fire review memorandum, assuming this is important to multiple members of board and to Mr. Welsh. The driveway. Will that be striped, there's no parking area between the building block and the side.
Yeah, that was the recommendation of the fire official that we do add text to the to the pavement as well as. No parking striping or firing striping for for the driveway step. Sure, and that's exactly what we mean.
I have no further questions to this business, but if I have a board to ask any other questions, I mean.
Yeah, I'm pretty bored. Any questions for Mr. Stockton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Stockton, good evening, good to see you again. A couple of things come to mind for me. One of which, as as you were talking about the low spot, I'm looking at some of the spot grades there. It looks like maybe elevation twenty seven and a circular factor in the back there and noticing. Bottom curve elevations that were twenty eight point seven, that's a pretty substantial fill that close to the property line. Given thought to exactly how you're going to accommodate those grade changes.
What actually happens in the right along the back property line? Free jumps up like a little goal. Where over the yard area between the back of our existing stone parking area and the back of the. Existing parking lot on adjacent body. So I think I think that area could actually accommodate a little bit of fill and blend into that.
About on the sidelines, some more.
On the westerly side lot line or the left lot line. As I mentioned, there's some existing masonry wall retaining already. So our grade would match to to that wall there. And then on the easterly side. That show on. Survey map sheet two, there is an existing dry stack stone wall framing the end of the existing parking area. And that that wall varies in height from about six or eight inches up to about eighty meters or so. So filling in that area kind of regrading right up the side lot lines, it's going to blend in and actually right at the back lot line. It's going to blend in.
Okay.
And I might have to add some additional spot rating on the plan to show them.
So the intent here is to largely capture all the water and bring it out to the street based on your your curving. And so today there may be some offsite spillage proposal here, channelize it and bring it to the front.
Make sure the front right into those catch base. And then the calculations that I did to support the application made board that was submitted. With the amount of existing previous coverage compared to the proposed. The difference in that in that of previous coverage is only five hundred and ten square feet. And that's going to produce only a perceptible difference in the amount. Volume and.
Yes, thank you. The other, I guess, one of my bigger concerns is just the viability of the. Parking lot in its configuration, recognizing that you didn't create the lot and you're doing the best you can with the palette you were provided. Did you look at any kind of turning templates or anything? The the fear I have, and I think I expressed this in my letter, is if. If the parking lot is fully occupied or anywhere near fully occupied, you're going to have some. Challenging maneuvers to get out of some of those spaces.
Yes, I agree with that. Preparation for tonight's meeting today, I did prepare trying to consider.
It's in your packets, the print version, so it didn't make it into my electronic. So if you were to look for your. I have a page in the second of the left page. I'm living in your floor, one of that would. Stock, you can speak to it, tell me if you need stuff, but remedy the situation.
Right, so what I what I did just to kind of analyze what would have to happen with. The far part. All the way into the back of the property. At the spot closest to our post. Correctional location. We have to back out and maneuver actually makes a five point eight turn. To be able to turn completely around in the area that we have and head out facing towards West. Think in reality might, what might actually happen i- in a scenario like that? It might be easier for a car to back out and use. The empty space of the handicap parking space or the. The accessible aisle next to it. Which I think. Most of the time will probably won't be occupied. But this five point catering would be the worst case scenario if.
And and that's only as to the spots at the far north of the property as opposed to spots along the east side of the.
Right, the spots along the east side would be able to back out in. They turn the three point they turn to.
Mr. Stockton, so looking at the four spaces along the east west orientation. Do you know what the actual width is from the stripe to the westerly curb line?
That would be twenty seven.
That is twenty seven feet. I know you had said a couple of numbers and I wasn't a hundred percent sure. So typically twenty four to twenty six is what you would normally have in most ordinances, so that's a little bit above. What you would expect to see there, that'll help to some degree. So your testimony then is based on the turning templates that you were able to to prepare that. While not the easiest maneuver in the world, it is it is feasible with a multi point K turn. I don't think anybody would appreciate doing that more than once or twice on a visit there, for instance, in the long term.
We did actually give some further thought to that, knowing that this would be a worst case scenario. And knowing that we had a variance request of one parking space for the layout that we have on planning out with the. Seven that we propose were eight or technically requires for the project site. If we change that variance request to parking spaces. We do lose one parking space. Out of those three, take the other two, turn them ninety degrees, put them in line with the back of four spaces. So everybody has that ability to back out into that twenty seven foot wide aisle and make a more regular catering movement.
And we've we've kind of relocated the generator in any event, so we can get that rear corner. Close to the building, so all you have is the refuse, what would you do with the refuse in that case?
Either. Find a spot without giving closer to the back property line or would completely sell their. Put inside. Based on that one of the building now. Part of the site operating needs to be provided west next to. Okay, so not anything really different than how trash is managed.
The board would essentially have a choice if they were inclined to approve the application, they could leave seven spaces. Three of which have some maneuverability challenges if the ADA spaces is being utilized. Or lose one extra space, go down to six spaces as opposed to seven. All in one neat line, parallel to West Front Street and all with better maneuverability. Two point maneuver, the vehicles could exit the site going from.
Two point is a little more better.
That would be at the board's discretion. We talked about another alternative where we could theoretically. Sign those three spaces at the rear of the property for employees only, which would mean that they're coming and going at times when. All the other spots are open, so they have more space and maneuverability. But I was hearing earlier this evening that the board preferred to keep the non sign parking available for public and folks to employees, so. Were flexible and if you want to come out of the time. We can actually with the board and Mr. Herman, everybody thinks it's the best of the circumstances.
With regard to the generator and the location that I saw, I say joins. I am going to move that to that place. So it'll be at the back.
Just one question. You you said that you moved the generator out of the back closer to the building. So on the plan where you have it, there is a window there. So. Either that window is not going to be there, you're going to have to move it out a little bit, but if you do that, now you're putting the generator in the line of fire.
And if we do, if we do put it at the back corner of the of the building, it shows on Mr. Simpson's plan. We'll make it code compliant. However, it has to.
No, I know you'll you'll get it within the window. But what about, he's trying to get some. Mr. Simpson has some testimony. That's not a window. That's a sign?
Well, that's a sign.
There are no windows proposed in the area.
In the rear of the house.
Right.
So you take that window out?
It's not a window, it's a sign.
It's just very small, it's supposed to say pub natural, it's the rear walls.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at something there. I'm looking at the the actual.
You may be looking at the original plans as opposed to Mr. Simpson's.
Yeah, you may be looking at the original house, so that won't be there, right, but if we move.
That literally won't be there because of the addition. That window you're looking at does not exist once we do the addition. So that is a sign, only a sign. The window you're looking at is in this plane over here. This addition and that will be built in those. So that's not. That could be as close as eighteen inches from that wall on that generator specification. And it's more than five feet from that corner, so we're going to have, I don't think there's going to be any.
You're just going to need heavy impact protection in that area.
Yeah.
Because you're already talking people doing a five point. Back there and that would be the first thing that gets clipped in the gas valve. Will some board have any questions?
I I have a question. Do I need to guess one?
No.
Great. Um, can you just clarify again? And I don't remember, I'm sorry if you mentioned it, how the trash is going to be taken out?
He's a good office trash. It says put in.
And then build out to the front?
Then run out to the front. Pick up on the designated that. And any scrap waste that happens with the out of the shop operations. That's specifically stored differently and brought by medical waste or. After the call is made for specific.
And there may really be no scrap waste, there's no cultivation aspect to it, it's not clipping any plans or anything like that. It's all pretty packaged, so you'll get sold, somebody at the end consumer presumably returned the source. Credit if they do that.
And then, so you're going to coordinate to have, can you coordinate to have your deliveries and trash pickup all at the same time? So it's not a continuous back and forth.
I think the applicant had testified earlier that they would certainly do rather hauling with the trash. Preference being for the hours. I guess prior to the opening of business, but not too early, right? You don't want to have garbage trucking on it, so. Just before they open for the day, similar to these, like having deliveries come in in the morning. Couple van, beer, it's not. Traffic patrons yet.
So I was just asking if they can be around the same timeframe.
That leaves the board, I guess we could certainly inquire as to whether they could be more innovative, you don't want conflicts. Certainly if one's blocking the driveway, you have to get in, but yeah, so certainly the same time, general time of day, early morning, but not too.
And then the, will you have an armored truck picking up any cash that's on site?
To defer to Mr. Case as far as how they would.
Yeah, so we would have an armored truck coming, I need armored trucks. One of both wars, like I mentioned, cash picker will be very early in the morning or late at night after closing. So you're not picking up cash generally that early or during patrons are there. If that does occur for some reason, then again, I'm assuming that the truck will lean to the back. Again, to them and their security. Brakes, for instance, we prefer to keep their truck on the street sometimes or right into the driving area, but you know, again, as we end up using. I'm open to suggestions, but I think that the goal is to do it when there are no patrons.
Cash on, Mike?
Oh, no, it's not cash.
You do take.
I'm more so just worried about the traffic flow with the armed car, if you're saying that sometimes they park on the street and then.
Also, the off that, we just probably choose when they wanted them. You're saying that here.
It's just because West West Frank kind of gets a little backed up.
And narrow.
And it's narrow, so.
Absolutely.
Pause and then when people going in and out of Pazzo, the the drive, the parking lot, it's gonna.
Understood, I I think we're fine with saying that the the truck will come inside. Now, again, it's based on the hours, it won't impact the the patrons, so I think we're fine.
Can you, also the board have any questions for Mr. Stockton?
Just a good question, sorry if I missed this, but I just wanted to clarify this in the other that Mr. Welsh had mentioned. If someone, if the parking lot is full and someone enters the driveway and heads to the rear. It doesn't appear that there is any way for them to turn around if there are no spaces, so presume at that point they would have to back out. And really that side space that you have wouldn't be enough to help them turn around, so they'd be backing into traffic on West Front Street, is that correct?
I I think either two things, they, in that scenario, in order to head up, they would use the twenty seven foot wide space available. For that five point catering. That would be a worst case, in all likelihood, they might even try. And I know I would if I was backing up and trying to pay turn around to use the. Eight foot wide striped aisle next to the parking space to help that. The eight-foot wide striped aisle next to the parking space to help that K turn. But there would be room to do that. It's just like five-point K turn.
So you're asserting it functionally would be no different than the person backing out. They would have that twenty-seven foot space would be enough. To make a many-point turnaround.
Really no different than the existing stone parking area that's there now with a narrow driveway that we have. And uh, the current owner has guests over and they pick up all those spaces that have to go around.
I'm guessing that owners probably never tried to back out into that traffic.
We wouldn't be encouraging uh, anyone to back out of the property and to the board's point if uh. The requirement was that all the onsite parking be strictly uh, dedicated to publicly renewable for that. That would be fine. That provides more onsite parking if we reduce the instances where somebody pulling by themselves without a space. Uh, we will have Mr. Simaw come up briefly. Uh, he's a traffic engineer. I'll tell you uh. What uh, his study will indicate in terms of like peak hour traffic site. Without seeing the show, I think the number. Inside will be enough spots on site so that his uh, study is accurate. Using the turnover that Mr. Case turned, uh, talked about, the ten minutes max for somebody on site. There should be available spaces throughout that peak hour to more than accommodate the district traffic volume. But I will let him speak to that.
Any other questions from the board? I don't know if the public have any questions for Mr. Stockton.
Well, Mr. Simaw. Well, we're not.
We're telling the truth. The whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Tell us who you are and where you're.
My name is Hal Simaw, S I M O A F. My office is at Two Shun Pike Road, Madison, New Jersey.
Mr. Simaw, while I don't remember, Simaw, I don't remember everyone that ever been here. Have you testified before this board before?
Uh, not in the recent past. I think it was zoning board a few times.
Give us, give us a thirty-second rundown on your credentials, please.
I'm a licensed professional engineer, licensed professional planner. Those licenses are current, good standing. I've been a professor of traffic engineering at NJIT as a junior professor. I'm also a fellow with the Institute of Transportation. We've all applied throughout the state as a traffic engineer.
Okay, thank you for your qualifications. I'll accept you as an expert. Thank you.
So you're from the other side?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, you prepared the traffic memorandum dated July sixth of twenty twenty-three. Those marked in Z fifteen.
Yes, I did.
Okay, did you present your findings as far as um, peak hour and the trip generation that we expect?
Yeah, the, the eleventh edition of the Institute of Transportation of years, trip generation has some projections for. Dispensary traffic volumes. Based on those, and they were done in Colorado and uh. All the other states, Colorado with main emphasis of the study. So based on those um, projections, I project on page three, here in the peak hour. Turns out that they project the power to be midday uh, weekday. While it's in thirteen. Weekday or weekend, weekday. The projections are a little bit less on Saturday. A little bit of that in the front hour. Four to six. Protect, based on the statistics developed by the I T E, Institute of Transportation of years, they uh, they.
Thank you for the day available.
Good day. Traffic volume turned out to be highs like two o'clock on the weekday. The reality is that. Uh, the, this parking, this area is available to have a significant amount of downtown traffic. To parking garage across the street. There's two-hour parking allowed to West Front. And so the variance parking is requested. Factored in and uh, because your ordinance doesn't differentiate between parking in downtown, central business district, district areas nor. Or a low area. And I think that this, based on its location, meets the definition of downtown area. And with multi-plant apartment. Obviously, the right by streets, also parking there, which the applicant is pledged to. Make arrangements to park his employees there. So with the ten-minute turnover. Um, let's take a look at the numbers. These parking spaces with a turnover could effectively turn over six times per hour. We have, we have seven parking spaces. That's fifty-six customers per hour. Where the I T E projections show twelve. So. My, in the parking, parking variance request, based on its location, it's um. Current parking. Street parking variance can be granted for one or two parking spaces if the board sees to it. Now, the other question that was brought up in the discussion was the pedestrian cross. Um, the, the definition. Where the man, under the title thirty-nine, of a crosswalk is the projection of sidewalk. So West Street are already, they're not marked. They, when you project the West Street sidewalk north. That effectively meets the definition of a crosswalk. And I would suggest as part of our uh, feelings with the county, we have the county. Recommended um, programs and striping and signage. The eighth party of the remaining crosswalk, like West Street. Which is about one hundred and twenty-two. And then there's ways of. Literally, uh, no, no crossing in front of the site to get correct. Whether people, by by is one thing, but um, like in intersection, it's very hard to cross crossing. We have no crossing.
Hey, there's one other um, question up here. Well, so give it up to the board to ask it. Um, you heard the operational testimony, the data. There was discussion as far as the adequacy of the width driveway and this pull-off lane to accommodate the um. The volumes that we might anticipate, knowing what you know about that study and about the volumes of the site. Is that, is that bypass lane that we discussed in front of site an adequate way to allow two-way traffic without?
I believe so. The, um, based on the number twelve entering and thirteen leaving during peak hour. That's approximately one car every five minutes. So if you talk about frequency. Chances that the uh, people come at the same time, it's pretty remote. And so that the extra width of the driveway can accommodate that remote hospital.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question. I was wondering. When you schedule, when someone goes on the internet, wants to come. Are you going to take into account that all these issues when you schedule them?
I'm going to bring Mr. Case back up to answer. It's a great question. You can certainly skip that.
Yes, absolutely. Our systems are queueing system. So definitely will get into consideration. It's about how many people we can serve. Uh, and so look at like you're reserving a table, right? So we can control, you like the only people coming in and out, just like we're in a restaurant.
So, so if you have a, a certain number, you won't let them, above a certain number, you'll make them, they won't be able to reserve at that time.
They'll have a time to come to pick up window.
Okay.
Essentially, as, as far as I understand it, they can have a, an array. When you go on the website, they would have open slots. Where you can come, maybe slot three can't come. They can control that. So if there was peak time where they wanted to maybe discourage extra volume, they just wouldn't allow an appointment then. There was a time that was a little bit slower and they want to push people to that time slot so that they kind of spread out the customer flow of the day. They can make more time, you can make more of those available.
But, but you already know if there's a cus- customers that have already um, made reservation. So just like a restaurant, you could, can't do it this time, right?
Yeah, yeah, certainly. There'd be a limited availability. Wouldn't stack it too great at any one time so that you're overwhelmed and you have some of these types of. Uh, harmful effects that would speculate that.
Yeah. So basically, it's in your power to minimize the traffic problem.
Mr. Simaw, um, in your review of the application and the background of this area. Um, any thought to any type of restrictions on the driveway movement? I think. Uh, one of the challenges we'll note is that uh, West Front Street oftentimes backs up. In an eastbound direction at the light, the queues sometimes pass uh, the entrance to the garage. Likely past your driveway entrance. It could be a self-leveling thing. I mean, I think the only real benefit would be a right out. It might be self-leveling if someone's seeing that traffic and realizing I can turn right and get out, or I can sit here and wait until. Someone has the courtesy to let me into this line of cars at certain times.
Well, first of all, that's, I think that's under the review of the county with recommendations from the borough. But um. You have to look at the alternatives. First of all, the projected volume. Or the, the I T E study showed that the peak hours are around two o'clock in the afternoon, which doesn't conflict. With the roadway peak hour. Before six P M, projections are a couple. Volume, a couple of vehicles less, based on the I T E's. But in any event, um. The uh, I'm somewhat of a. You have to look at the alternative that if you restrict that, turns out. Um, where does that traffic go? And I think that enough ruin the driveway to stack. Wait for the light to change or wait for a courtesy gap. We're only talking about a two or three courtesy gaps per hour. Um, I think that the, the. Balance is better to allow that to us. But if this board. Has that recommendation, we would take it to the county and sign it appropriately.
I was just mainly interested if you had given any thought or consideration, if that would be any net benefit in your opinion as a traffic engineer. I think.
I don't think so. I should say that the county did ask for a stop bar and stop sign at the driveway and obviously we're. Do that. They didn't ask specifically for the L F N, but. Simaw is.
Anyone else from the board have any questions for Mr. Simaw? Anyone from the public? Yeah, yes, right there, Mr. Kelly. You can pull it right over if you'd like.
The reason right here, we're telling the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I saw. Okay. My name is Alan Hill. I live at sixty-four thousand streets. I'm particularly interested in this, in that traffic study. Um. Because I, I, I think it's evident that probably in the area within one, two blocks, there will be similar more establishments of this type. And I wonder if the traffic study has taken into account that accumulated. Traffic from possibly four or five, in fact, maybe a dozen of them at the same. You know, these traffic studies look at, at the establishment in isolation. But forget, there might be a similar one around the corner and, and so. So that's the first question that I'm thinking. And if the businesses aren't required to, then surely it's the um, the board to coordinate that and make sure. That uh, the, these studies are complementary. It actually brings a whole picture. That's my first question.
Lon, do you want the applicant to hit that one, or if you're second to type in somehow also? To you.
Kind of uh, a traffic study. I'm not certain what is meant by a traffic study here. When we talk about traffic, but certainly when NJ Doc talks about traffic. It's not just talking about cars in parking. It's also talking about pedestrians, people who drive bikes. People who drive carriages and herd animals throughout the night. Now, we hear as usual in the red bank, what's going to go to the car and all the other. Et cetera, et cetera. The only bits I've read about pedestrians here is that they're not going to facilitate easy access to the site in this so-called walkable, called the town. They're going to show up any crossing up, up to the end of the street. Uh, and you know, up here at the end of the street, buy out any bike back in the in the dances. So those are my questions really.
Well, the last item, bike, bicycle parking is a good idea. We could provide, but I. Um, a lot of planning boards and boards have required like E V. Uh, E V uh, stations and bicycle parking. I don't think we're doing any insight here. You know, bicycle practically beneficial. I agree. Now on the uh. Uh, this is edge of a central business district. And that's the, um, Mr. Simpson will talk about that. But the uh, whether this becomes a. Uh, cannabis dispensary or retail permitted. The trip generation is going to be in the same order of magnitude. It's as, it's committed use. It's, retail is committed at this site. So converting to this house, sort of retail cannabis is. It's going to be.
Let me add that the law says that if it's zoned for this. That we can't say no because we're worried about there being too much traffic. So the whole point becomes moot according to the law. Sorry about that, but that's what it is.
Is that fitting with the uh, with the, the plan, the uh, development?
Master plan?
But you know, we just can't say that we're only going to allow one drugstore. We're only going to allow one this, one that. We can't do that.
I understand that. You accept there's going to be more of an issue.
There's going to be more, yes.
Yep.
Yeah, this is going twenty-five to see your stream. Um, and referred hearing.
What, 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 what you forget. Raise your hand. Swear to tell the truth, all truth, but the truth.
Absolutely. Um, and the, another hearing, they had to quantify that employees were not allowed to park at the parking spots. They had to park at the posers. So you mentioned posers a few times tonight. Has anybody talked to posers and seen how much they have as far as capacity? Because you have another pot location in order to put their employees there. You have a poso who obviously wants the restaurant to be filled. And you have office buildings next to it and employees that use it. So does anybody know what's the maximum capacity?
Only one shortage, am I right? There's only one spot shortage. They said that they're not going to park any employees on site. Their parking variance is, is one, or if there's a change, two cars. So I don't think anyone would consider that shortage not available in the neighborhood, whether it's in the garage or somewhere else. It's, it's what the Latin called a minimis. It's not a big deal. It was ten, it would be a big deal, but it's not. It's one or two cars. And it, that one or two extra car, keep in mind, if they had eight spots, we wouldn't be talking about parking at all. They have seven.
Well, they have seven, but the D said they have about five employees.
But it, they, they, it all, they're only require to have a parking space. That's the ordinance.
That's fine. Even so, I'm just getting a general then. My question is, has anybody thought to figure out how much space is left on posos? Before the next person comes in and says, hey, we got another pot place, we're going to use posos. What's the capacity? I'm sorry, we've done it backwards.
I don't know that. Anyone else from the public have any questions?
Anyone else from the public have any questions? Does anyone from the public have any comments regarding the application? Um, do you still have Mr. Simpson just to address any planning concerns?
Yeah, I, I can, you're, you're a real, you really need to go to it. It's, we usually.
We're dying at thirty. Do you want to come back?
You want to come back?
I, I have one sheet with about three points.
How long is that gonna take you?
You want to come?
Yeah. Take it real short. I actually can't. I thought we go on.
How many minutes?
Two.
We're watching.
All right, we got two minutes.
The channel is in Christine.
Didn't see if he would be qualified as a lawyer.
And this is a little off script, but I'm just gonna jump because I think it's the key issue and you can obviously fire a question. Um, in the case of this, we have hardship variance, C one variance is really what we're dealing with. And under the New Jersey municipal land use law, we have to.
Why is there a hardship? Did, have, has anybody testified that there's no, that there's no other, a land available?
That's, I, I'm trying to keep them.
All right. I mean, I mean, why do these things take time? You know, open up that book, we'll open up that book, but that's the problem. Red.
Okay, so I'm trying to answer that. So, um, there are seven different criteria that there could be. At least. Four of them apply to this site. It's exceptionally narrow and therefore that affects the driveway, parking lot, and the buffering to adjacent properties. Two, it's also shallow. Uh, that it also affects the parking lot layout and the ability to make a smooth turning configuration is already testified to. The physical features, which uniquely affect a specific property, also come into hardship budget. Which is the county road inlets and drainage on Front Street literally limit what we can do as far as access and egress from the site. Last but not least, structures lawfully existing there, the strict application of yours would result in peculiar and exceptional practical difficulties. Two, and we're a hardship upon the act. In this case, strict application would mean either moving or tearing down the house. Which doesn't seem to be in the benefit of any way. Um, the lot exists in the width that it is, we cannot obtain adjacent properties and mitigating conditions. A new building fully compliant with the same use, we create just as many or maybe even more variances, they create a new construction. So within all those things, we believe those hardship issues have been met. But further, we also believe that going to the negative criteria is also something that is satisfied. No variance may be granted unless the board finds that it can be granted without sub- substantial detriment to the public good. And that it will not substantially impair the intended purpose of the zone plan and zoning work. Well, in this case, you have a residential zone in what is largely, not entirely, largely a commercial street. That commercial street in the last two master plans has been identified as being a key linkage between the west and east side of Red Bank. You have the east side, downtown Broad Street, Maple Avenue area. That each of those master plans has encouraged a linkage on two specific streets. Front Street and Mama Street, you create a greater pedestrian, um, uh, commercial presence. This advances that. So not only does it not create a substantial detriment, it also in fact advances. So in that case, we believe as strong that as a planning for this use, it's a retail use. Yes, it's a conditional cannabis use, but it is a retail use. It's already discussed even with Mr. Dometo. And, and the rest of you, if it changes to another retail use, it's still a retail use. And all those same conditions would apply and it in fact fosters the nature of your. And so in that respect, as a planning issue, we believe that this is advancing the natural. I may have been more than two minutes.
There was three. That was well done. Um, does anyone from the public have any comments? You're welcome to ask questions as well, but now is your last opportunity. To make any comments or questions. That being said, I'd like a motion to close the public portion of the meeting. On favor?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson, would you like to wrap up?
Yeah, I will, um, very briefly, this will lead me, where it is, um, shown.
You know, you don't really need it to, to sum up, you know? Why, why don't you let the board discuss it? Then if you want to sum up, you should.
I'll, I'll reserve the summation. I'll.
Absolutely. Absolutely. If you don't like the way it's going, you'll be able to sum up.
That's fair. So I'll, I'll. Comment on, on the application and, and specifically where it comes from of what, um, Mr. Simpson said. Just because a use is permitted in the zone, doesn't mean every site in that zone should be that use. And, uh, you know, a conforming lot would solve all your problems. You wouldn't be here tonight. You chose a lot that's not conforming. And the fact that it's not conforming, in my opinion, is not a hardship. It's a house. It's been a house. It could continue to be a house. Uh, the type of retail use doesn't bother me at all. I care less what kind of retail use it is. But the, the, the. Lack of conformance in this lot has led to the variance relief that you're requesting. And whether it's buffer front, uh, the frontage setbacks, the driveway size, which in my opinion is a, is a safety issue. Uh, and it's certainly been considered less than ideal by our engineer. The rear lot constraints and the access from West Front Street concern me greatly. As far as I'm concerned, you know, you should petition the county to change the drainage. We can get conforming driveways. And, you know, I mean, you, you need twenty-four feet. You don't have enough, you don't have enough width for a single driveway, let alone two. Um, the little green sign not in favor of the application and, and just don't think you've got the right location for your permitted use. And I'd be happy to hear what anyone else on the board has to say.
Mr. Anderson should sum up.
Mr. Chairman, my, I'm, I'm still stuck on this crosswalks and pedestrian. Cause I do drive there a hundred times a week. And, and it's like. The applicant said you would hope that people would take and act like adults and cross at the right places. They don't. Quite frankly, I'm not really worried about the pedestrians when that happens. I'm more concerned about the traffic that's already clogged up there. And people having to go back and forth, because I see it happen all the time. When like, Dan said, when you come in, you'll get a bottleneck heading east. Uh, not so much going west after, uh, three o'clock. But I, I'm stuck on that and the fact that you are actually. Gonna have to market the park across the street, which is going to, and it's gonna be the easiest thing for the business is to have that parking garage across the street. And it's not a municipal parking garage. So at the end of the day. I have a problem with that. Uh, it's a, it's a strictly congested there and having people darting in and out between the two lanes.
Anyone else on the board have any comments?
Um, yeah, I, I agree with Dan, I'm. Let it rid of the guys' names. Getting late, guys. Um, and I, I, I think that, I think that we. We really need to think long and hard before. Thank you.
And so you think you want, maybe I was premature. Maybe you do want to do that summation or you're strong on your own evidence?
Let's, uh, one minute recess to talk.
Sure.